Good evening. Call the board of this meeting of the New York City School Board, May 14th at 6:32 PM. Who would you call to roll through this? Mr. Blaine?
Here.
Mr. Blauer?
Here.
Ms. Nickle?
Here.
Mr. Webber?
Here.
And Mr. Carr?
Here.
Mr. Webber, would you please pledge allegiance to the Constitution?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Resolutions or recognitions? Seeing none. Special reports? Approval of the five-year forecast?
You do have a copy of the five-year forecast and also the notes to the five-year forecast. And you're just in case it happens again, and it doesn't happen again, but the libel goes So you can zoom the side as well there. Turn the light, dim the lights a little bit there. All right. Okay, you can say there. Just up here. Okay, this is an update of the five-year forecast from October. And by Ohio Department Code, we need to update it as of in the month of May. It's submitted to the Ohio Department of Education. The first review is that revenues for fiscal year 18 from the October to the May update slightly gone up. And this is primarily due to the real estate taxes, income tax, and state foundation. Our expenditures, year-over-year, over the five-year term on the five-year forecast, is growing at an average of 3%. And those expenditures are starting to begin to outpace our revenues by fiscal year 2020, which digs into our reserve. However, our cash balance or reserves will continue to be in the black. And this is due to passing the new levy. This is May 8. This picture will show you a little what I meant by fiscal year 20. This is fiscal year 2015 through 2022. Fifteen through seventeen is actual. As you can see, the red line is our expenditures, and this blue line is our revenues. By 20 fiscal year 2020, the gap, the gap between the expenditures and revenues, now you start seeing the separation. Slightly in 2020 was having a little bit of deficit spending there, and it keeps growing as the years goes out. And again, as I mentioned before, our revenues are relatively flat about 1%, and our expenditures 3% growth. So you can see the difference in this line where the gap is getting bigger due to that discrepancy of revenues being less than our expenditures, which then you can see our cash balance start to dip down as a result of that expense over the revenues. But again, we continue to be in the positive at year end in each of those five years. Our revenues come from many different areas, but primarily the revenues are 57% comes from the state, and 30.5% is local sources. So we still depend a lot from the Ohio Department of Education, which is very important that we monitor the state foundation or biannual budgets every two years to see how that's going to change over the next. We have in this five-year forecast, we have two new biennials coming in, 2021 and 22 and 23, which we don't know what's going to happen in there, but we'll keep monitoring to make sure that it doesn't affect us as much. The challenges that we have for the operating revenues are three-fold. You know, we need to continue to increase our local revenues, either via donations and again, future tax revenues. Renewing the levies, that will be a challenge that we have to see, especially in 2022 with the income tax. Again, the uncertainty of the state aid. We really don't know what the biannual is going to happen and what they're going to do. Right now, our district is a cap district, which means that we cannot get any more revenues than we received prior fiscal year. So it ignores the formula. So we need to keep an eye on what's going to happen with the cap in the next biannual. And again, you know, we have a lot of programs that are being done by the federal and state governments. When they reduce those dollars in our federal and state grants, that means that we need to replenish them with the general fund. So again, we need to make sure that that's another challenge that we need to address down the road. Our expenditures, the majority, as you all know, is salaries and benefits. Seventy-four percent is all salaries and benefits, while the remaining 30% is discretionary expenditures, like purchase services and materials and any other expenditures that Outside of salary and wages on this graph, you can see that the next major category will be our purchase services. And that includes tuitions to other community schools, utilities, tuition expenses, et cetera, for special students. So that's why we see that that's the next category that we need to also use out to look into to make sure that we can sustain on those areas. This tells a story about ending cash balance from 2015 through 2022. As you can see, from 2019 down, we are now experiencing a decline in our cash balances. And that's because of our expenditures exceeding our revenues by three, almost by double what our revenues are. So you can see that that started dipping down our cash balance, but again, at the end of the day, we are still in the positive over the next five years. And that also passing the renewal levy help to make sure that we stay in the positive over the next five years in the five-year forecast. This 30-day cash range, that's total expenditures divided by 12 months, so that's basically what we need to have to make sure that every month we spend roughly over $6 million. So that's the 30-day cash balance that we'll also look into to make sure that we never In conclusion, our revenues continue to remain flat at a 1.5% increase over the next five years, while expenditures continue to outpace an average of 3% per year. We also need to look at programs and implement some cost measures to achieve sustainability, especially in the years out fiscal year 2020, 21, and 22, when our expenditure exceeds our revenues. So we need to look at those problems and see what we can do to sustain them. Long-term, we need to watch the budget, state budget, again, the 2021 budget and the following 22, 23 state budget. We need to find out what kind of deliberations, what kind of new legislative bills are passed that's going to affect our school district. And hopefully, the state formula doesn't change in the next biennium to a way that will hurt our school district. We also need to maintain the district finances, be stable on those. And by passing the renewal of the emergency levy is one way to achieve that, but we also need to look at the income tax as well, because again, without those two, we don't have to ask for any more new additional money. So that's one of the things that we need to start looking into. We need to pass those renewals in a timely manner so that we don't get into the point where we need to ask for new money. Well, thank you. And again, you have a document there you can look into, and if you have any further questions after your review, don't hesitate to call me.
Thank you. Hey, Julio, as you're finishing up, just a thought. When you estimate income, you estimate conservatively. When you estimate expenses, you kind of give them a little extra bump, just so we know, which is pretty fair.
It's best to estimate conservatively in the five-year forecast to make sure that we move forward that way. But yes, that's the method that we use to estimate our expenditures, as well as our revenues.
I'm just thinking about the millions of people that are watching this and helping them to understand that, you know, you're conservative on what we get coming in, but you're also expecting a little higher of what's going out that way. If it realigns itself, that's not a bad problem to have, so that's good. Thank you for your work on that. Communications from the floor. Is there something else?
Do you want to move on that?
I thought that would do it with treasurer's recommendation, but we can't.
Oh, okay.
We'll take the motion to approve the five-year forecast.
So good.
A second.
Yeah.
Tom, thank you. Any questions for treasurer?
Mr. Blauer? Yes, Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Ms. Nickle?
Yes.
Mr. Webber?
Yes.
And Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, now communications from this board. You may approach the podium. Now please state your name and address. You will have five minutes. And this is not a back-and-forth time, it is just your time to share with us your thoughts. You may or may not get questions from the board. Mr. Valdez, you got yours?
Yes.
What will we do without them?
My name is Kira Harper. My address is 874 Trinity Court, Newark. And I am here to address the board about policy. My son recently was suspended from school for drug possession, and the reason that was, was because the child had handed him some pills in the hallway, and he went to the bathroom and flushed them down the toilet rather than go immediately to a teacher. After he did that, he went immediately to a teacher and he told, and because he did that, there was multiple students that were suspended. He did not take the pills. He was completely honest with the teacher. He was completely honest with the principal. Due to policy, he was suspended for 10 days. He had the pills in his hand for five seconds maybe. I'm okay with that. That's policy. Fine. We went to appeal the suspension. We could not do that due to policy. Because of policy, he was kicked off the track team. Because of policy, he now has to take drug and alcohol treatment, even though he's never done drugs or alcohol. Because of policy, he now has to take consecutive drug tests in order to participate in the athletic program. And I get why the policy is in place. I understand that there are kids who need that, and you guys are giving them second chances, and that's great. But in this instance, my son has now been punished over three months from coming forward and being honest and not doing drugs. And I'm having to pay for counseling. He is suffering in school because he did miss that 10 days, and he does have an IEP. So yes, he was granted to make up that work, but without the additional help from the teachers that he should get for his work, that work has fallen behind. And I think that not everything is black and white. And when it comes to policy, that maybe some things maybe need amended in situations like this because he's been discouraged to come forward. He's never going to say anything again. He told the truth, and he was punished for it, and he's been punished for it for the last three months now. And because of that, there's other kids that know his story, and they're going to be discouraged to come forward as well. So I just think that maybe the drug possession policy might need tweaked a little bit or maybe amended to where you can make exceptions for things in these cases where a child comes forward and rather than being punished, they sort of are saying, they're told, like, hey, great job, because that's not what he was told, and he's, it's been devastating to him. Not only is he getting it from the school, but he's getting it from the students, because the other students know his story, and he's now being bullied for coming forward and telling. So I just think with this policy, maybe something needs to change slightly. I'm not mad at the teachers, I'm not mad at the principal. Everybody followed policy, and that's the problem, is the policy. So I just think maybe that policy should be reviewed before the next school year to not discourage kids to come forward. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Stay there. No questions from the board? Which school?
It is Liberty Middle School. Sounds great.
You mentioned he's being bullied. Has he come forward about that?
He doesn't want to come forward because of him coming forward about other things. He just feels like nothing's going to be done. So he doesn't want to come forward about that. He's just been dealing with it. So what do you do? Anything else?
So you said that was three months ago?
Well, it happened last month, but the track, he started the beginning of the season. He didn't get to start. The first track meet was the day he was suspended.
That's what I was wondering.
So he didn't do track in order for him to do football. He has to complete the drug and alcohol program. Again, he's never done drug and alcohols. I am paying for him to go to lab, get the evaluation, and then he's told he has to sit out the first game as well, as long as that treatment is completed. I'm also pulling him out in the middle of the school day to get him to his counseling appointments so that he can participate in the athletic program. The only reason I am doing this is my son has ADHD. I don't medicate him. The athletic program is amazing for him. When you take that away from him, he does terrible in school. That is his motivation for doing well in school. So when you take that away, everything else goes downhill. So that's why it's so important that I get him to these appointments, to make sure that he is able to participate in the programs through the school. I just, personally, I feel like it's a waste of money, and I don't think, I think it's a waste of money for the school as well to tell me that they're going to continue to drug test him frequently when he'd even do drugs. That's a waste of money, in my eyes. I understand why it's done, but it's so wrong. It's so wrong. And I don't, I don't agree with it. A lot of people don't agree with it. And it is discouraging to other kids. He has a lot of friends, and they all know his story, and so it's been spread along with the school. And it's disappointing, is what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Williams. My address is 1556 Pleasant Valley Drive in Newark. I have, my daughter is at Legend Elementary and Kindergarten this year, ending. I'm here tonight to ask for, as silly as it sounds, but to ask for more recess for them. And please understand that I want my kids to get a good education, so it's not like I want them out on a playground playing all day. But they're sitting in class for seven hours, and even as an adult, we get a morning and afternoon break, and they're getting a lunch combined with recess. So they're getting about 45 minutes to eat their lunch, get out there and play. Well, unfortunately, at five and six years old, and even up through third grade, their priority is recess. So now they're not eating their lunch. You know, my daughter comes home every day, there's food left in her bag, and honey, why did you leave that? Well, I didn't have enough time. I wanted to go play. And you can't blame them. You know, unfortunately, if you look back to even when I was a kid, kindergarten was every other Monday, Wednesday, and half a day on Friday, or it was actually half a day Monday, Wednesday, and every other Friday. But, you know, things have changed, and I completely get that. And I want her and my youngest to get a good education. But I've done a lot of research that shows, you know, they need that activity, they need to get out and to exercise and to give their brain a little bit of a break. I don't know about you, but if I sit all day in a meeting, I'm done. You know, I need to get up and get a break and get out and to refresh my brain. You can't expect a little kid who has three times the energy that we do to sit still in class all day long. And we keep getting, you know, that they have ADHD and they have ADD, and while I completely agree that some do, I don't think that all do. I think that, you know, if they could get out and burn some of that energy, we would find that they are, I mean, that they're going to do better in school. The research that I've read, several, I actually sent one to New York City School and never got a response, but was, you know, with a state or a school in Texas, they tripled their recess time, and their scores have gone through the roof. The kids are more engaged, you know, they're doing a lot more. And so, you know, I'm not here again to say I want my kid to play in recess all day long, because I got to do that when I was a kid. I got naptime too. I'm not asking for that. I just want them to get what we get as an adult. We get a morning, afternoon break, we get a lunch break. If we can separate that, and they get a lunch break where it's focused on lunch, eat your lunch, and then have some time to, you know, break it up in the morning and afternoon, is what I'm asking for. So I think all the elementary schools would really benefit from that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen ladies. Treasurer recommendation?
Yes, we have A through F. A is the approval of four minutes for the April 9, 2018 regular meal. B is the approval of April 20 financial reports. Letter C is the approval of fiscal year 2018 permanent supplemental application resolutions. We have two funds changes, Fund 19 and 300. Letter D is the approval of athletic training services agreement. Letter F is the approval of change orders for the MTW building, up to $10,000 in change orders. And letter F is the approval of pay invoice to San Quinones. The gentleman came over to speak May 8. Any questions?
Motion, treasurer's recommendations, A through F. Thanks, Tom. More in a second. Questions?
They agreed through the Ohio Health contract. Seems to be a couple hours, over 100 hours every week. I think you had two part-time and one full-time, so I like that contract.
Yes, they added a couple more hours than previously in the contract.
Yes.
Mr. Webber?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Ms. Nickle?
Yes.
And Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Superintendent recommendation?
Okay, under personnel, we have some resignations on there, and some young kids and retirements, excuse me, on here that are focused headed to some different opportunities. There is a leave of absence on there also. Appointments and assignments. We have, I think, three new teachers in here tonight that we're excited to have you. And that means if you're in May, that means you're a couple green dot person, which is very big here. And so you have a lot to live up to. That way, as Barb Mora, Mindy, and several others went out and hit the pavement this spring to bring some good young leaders in, you know, they do a color coding system. And so congratulations, green daughters, probably two green daughters, I would imagine, but we're excited to have you. We just spent some time with our first, second, third, and fourth-year teachers this afternoon in our mentor program. Looked around the room, we really brought in some really outstanding young leaders. So we're excited to have you guys with us also, and so thanks for coming tonight. Supplemental contracts, we have on here, we're going to remove Mike Capachi and vote on Michael separately tonight, so we removed Mike on there. But we also have Jeff Quackenbush, JR Shoemate, excited to have David Clark as our new cross-country coach. David's been doing middle school and a teacher at Liberty. And then George Brown, who is also a teacher at Liberty, will take over the middle school position. So we're excited to have those folks. I'm going to back up a second because I apologize for this. Rachel Spence is a name I got handed to me shortly before the meeting. That will be a middle school, seventh, eighth grade social studies at Heritage Middle School. We're excited to have Rachel join us also, so make sure that she's on your list. We do have the normal list of substitute guest teachers on here, and some classified positions. Also, under other, recommend the following substitute teacher be, not be re-employed, and I always bring this up, it's not because of job performance, it's simply by law, serving over 60 days. Adoption of the resolution to issue contracts to certified staff that you have in your packet. List is too long to bring up, so that's item A, personnel.
All right. Item A, one through eight, with the exception of Mr. Capachi, we will vote for it after our executive session. So. Thank you. Sarah? Sorry. Thanks, Mark. We need discussion. All right, same thing.
Ms. Nickle?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Webber?
Yes.
And Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, under students and curriculum, we have our monthly special education contracts, two of note, one with Reach Educational Services, one with Buckeye Branch on there also that students are attending. Under other, approved the graduation list for two weeks, in two weeks, and that's a good number. I'm not sure what percentage, but that list is up, I think about 347, somewhere in that neighborhood, in there, which is a large number, so we appreciate that list from Mr. Bowman. Approval of out-of-state field trip. Our band and orchestra will attend Walt Disney World in Florida next April 1st through the 6th, and we're excited to have our students get that opportunity. Had a question, and a good question about testing with that, and that may hit a little bit of the testing, but I think not much, right, Tara?
Yeah.
We checked on that, so we're good there, but that's a good question. But that'd be a great trip for our students to go out there and get a chance to perform down there. Ms. Nickle might go as a chaperone, maybe, huh?
My son might go. He'll go, he'll go.
And then the approval of state and federal funded programs, the list is on there. Under D, Board of Education has to approve limited bus service for Newark High School students as shown in appendix. Again, that's the cluster stops, and that, that route will be set at the beginning of the year, and, and the board made that commitment several years back, and we appreciate that, it does make a difference for our students. Approval of resolution authorizing membership in Ohio High School Athletics Association, which is a yearly, uh, resolution. Resolution regarding the Board's establishment of overnight Board-sponsored, oversight, not overnight, excuse me, oversight of Board-sponsored community schools. Recommend the Board approve the establishment of an oversight Board-sponsored community schools as shown in appendix. Approval of school fees for two thousand nineteen school year, I always try to bring up, we work very hard to keep those consistent across the district. And then also the approval of handbooks under B. Item C, we have no gifts to report this month. Item D, contracted services with Flipping Area Computer Association, LACAD, St. Francis and Sale School, and Newark High School will be approved as shown in the appendix. And then the acceptance and awarding of bids for the pavement project at Legend and Liberty. And so I know Mark and, and his gang have, have worked very hard on that. They were going to get a little bit more than, than we originally planned to do because the bids came back under projected cost, and so we looked at saying, what we budgeted for that, let's take it and do a little bit more. And so we're excited, excited for that. Oh, I'm sorry. Forward. Yep. Suspension of extra curricular transportation fees, the Board did this two years ago, and I'll report to you that, you know, our, our folks have been good stewards of, of that resolution. We have not increased our, our budget since the Board's been paying for those trips. And I know that our booster clubs are very thankful because they're raising money to go afford students about transportation. So thank you, Board members, for your commitment to, to that.
All right, superintendent's recommendation, please, D. Any discussion, questions?
Of course. The first one, and Deb jokily mentioned her son is going to Liberty, and that brings up, you know, this is a week of school these kids are missing, and it's a great field trip, I love it. But if we don't have in our policy already, I'd like to see somewhere, if there is a kid scheduled to go and they're identified as marginally, marginally academically, or struggling some, if there's any way we could throw in some sort of study hall dirt trip or something, I'd hate to see the trip where the kid's far behind, can't afford to get far behind. At the same time, I'd hate to see this, a real field trip. So I'd just like to see something in there that would allow, allow those kids to really be kept on target to have an apple while they're on the field.
There is something in place like that as far as the A three DC trip. I think that, I'm not sure what the other.
I think that kid moves the trip, but I'd like to see something, if they have hours and hours of time to do some studying, stay up on theirs. And also, Legend of Liberty, is that extra, is that included, you work on the base?
Yeah, we went, we, we made special mention of that base, and we wanted the, Mark, you want to, I know there's certain areas that they're going to go deeper.
In, in, in the bid specs, you'll notice that they've identified where they'll remove all top coating, there's, I think, seven hundred and some square feet that they've identified as needing to be completely removed, not just a chip and, you know, not just writing it off and resurfacing, but a total removal. So there's a specified amount of square feet in that bid, you'll see that in there that they identified. So additionally, because of the cost, basically the cost per, per square yard of, of, of what they're doing, we're going to go ahead and again, expand some of that pavement area to the front, the entire front of Liberty Middle School.
Good, because if we, if we don't build the seal up, or the base up some, we're going to be right back four or five years from now doing it again.
Right, right.
So it's worth spending the extra money now.
Yeah, like I said, they've identified those areas and have specified that square footage and, and identified those areas, so.
Thank you, sir. I know there's, there's a lot of water in that area, and holds it really well, so it's, I mean, it's a challenge to try to do that. Would you call it also?
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Blaine?
Yes.
Ms. Niglin?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
If she cares.
This is my favorite part of, of the job. Intent to adopt Board policies. It is recommended the Board of Education announce its intent to adopt the following policies as shown in the appendix. The announcement being made that these policies will be available to the Board, staff, and public for inspection from May fifteenth, twenty eighteen, through June eleventh, twenty eighteen. Assault Committee File twenty-two seventy-one College Credit Plus Program, File five-one-one-one, Eligibility of Resident, Non-Resident Students, File five-two-zero-zero, Attendance, File five-three-three-zero, Use of Medications, and File five-five-three-zero, Drug Prevention. Need to vote on that?
No.
No?
Just announcing.
Just announcing. All right. More discussion? Mr. Blunt?
Want to thank the parents that got up and spoke, we will discuss your concerns. Want to welcome the new staff members, especially the ones that are here. Welcome Newark City Schools, I think it'll be an enjoyable experience. Want to congratulate our retirees as schools end, and congratulate them, thank them for modern year's experience, walking out the door there. Want to congratulate our, I believe it's two hundred and forty-something graduates that are on that list. What, two many years ago, we were below three hundred, and so this is quite a large group. Want to wish them luck in their future endeavors, in employment, college, military, whatever the next step is. I also want to thank the community for last week's election results. To, even for a renewal to pass by a sixty-fourty margin is pretty unusual, and I think it just displays the type of support Newark City Schools gets out of the community. And I want to say that I think we all here at this table work hard to earn that trust, and I think the entire district does. I mean, we've got roughly eight hundred employees, a little more than that, and I, I think the entire district works hard to earn that trust, and I'm glad to see that people are paying attention, watching, and putting faith in what we are doing. Was that, what, two of the senior retirees?
Um, I'd like to kind of recap on what Tom just said. First of all, congratulations to our new teachers, all right? I'm not sure what, what color was that again?
Green.
Green, okay, all right. Congratulations, looking forward to having you in the district. And I think Blaine is a, is a great district to teach at. I'd like to thank Kara Harper and Kara Williams both coming in this evening, and you addressed the Board, and I do believe you deserve a more response. So if, if you don't mind staying afterwards so we get some contact information, okay? I would like, uh, these are very important issues, and I'd like to talk to them. Graduation round around the corner, and I understand that we have a really super outstanding guest speaker coming in to do graduation, right?
Yes, Admiral, on the ball. Nineteen eighty graduate.
Kelly.
Admiral Kelly. I think it's Admiral Kelly, nineteen eighty graduate of Newark City Schools.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay. Anyway, can the levy, levy passage was, thank you again. It, it certainly makes everyone's jobs easier, or not having to look at making some serious decisions, uh, in regards to making cuts. And the forecast, five or ten-year forecast, I think, I could say was made possible across that. Okay, okay. So again, thank you, and with that, I shall pass to Tom.
Okay, I want to congratulate, like everyone else did, the new teachers, and we hope that you have a long and prosperous career here at Newark High School or Newark City Schools. The levy passing was great, you know. There's something else when you get older, my, my. I did attend the, you know, TC banquet, and I got a chance to speak to the student cadets, and I actually got to wear my uniform again after some minor adjustments. After twenty-five years, that was, I didn't think I was going to make it. I did a lot of deep breaths and worked out of it. Uh, the other thing is, every month or so, we get a book from the Ohio Student Board Association, which we are members of, and usually I'll read the articles, and sometimes I'll look at the pictures, and lo and behold, I, there was a picture of Julio Doug and I in a deep discussion, that's what it says. Yeah, well, it says, they shared their thoughts prior to the lunch with their legislators, so we were trying to decide how much we were eating. It was all business. It was all business. Other than that, to the three hundred and forty-seven graduates this year, a congratulations. That's fine.
I'd like to welcome Tom to the Soul Committee. He found out recently that it truly is the hard working community.
There we go.
I'm just saying, I'm thinking from personnel and finance. Personnel is. Thank you to the parents that come in, they came in and spoke this evening. We actually welcome the comment because we don't know what we don't know, so we don't know if there's a problem, and certainly nothing will change if, if we don't know anything about it, so we do appreciate you coming in this evening and sharing your thoughts. We do appreciate that. Welcome to the new staff members, the ones that are here, and the ones that also that can make it tonight. And I'm being more average, do we have to go nude? You do have to make one of them.
We have, we posted a total of thirty-five jobs. That includes like summer school, STEM, and robotics, supplementals, different things like that. We've currently filled fourteen, and we have twenty-one positions still that we're working on, so, to get filled. We have ten new hires, and four staff have transferred into different positions, still as teachers, but maybe going from a different building that way.
How many, how many applicants do you interview in a year, per our estimate?
At least, I'm going to say on the low end, at least a hundred. I mean, there's a lot of candidates that we have, whether it's when we're out recruiting and doing that with, and then bringing those candidates back for all of the principals and the teams to kind of interview again, so we have a lot of people that are interested in Newark City Schools. So we're in a good spot, and it's just narrowing down all of the candidates to have, to see who has the best, you know, the best qualities that, that rise to the top, so, we have a lot.
You know, congratulations to all the graduates, not just the obvious, the high school seniors, but we also have celebrations for fifth graders and eighth graders and all the buildings, and congratulations to those students also, and good luck to them at the next, in the next level. And then congratulations to the many retiring teachers, and I think it's always fun to guess how many retired teachers that say they're not coming back in summer, are back in summer within a year.
They miss.
Because they miss it after the, a lot of times you take the first nine weeks off, but then when they come back, and so, and that's always great to see, because the kids love to see them, so that's awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you for casting the levy. That was a, a beautiful gift that the community gave to us in two thousand and nine, and this makes what the third, third time that the community has renewed that levy for us, and words cannot express what that means to the students in our district, and so please know how much we appreciate that, that gift from the community.
Welcome, new staff, and pleasure meeting you all, and the community, I'll thank you for the support of the renewal of the levy. Again, being in back of that, that looks, that those dollars coming back are going to be well-maintained, and the students are going to be getting what they deserve in education. So thanks again.
I'll start off by congratulating Mike Blowers on a wonderful career in education in, what, thirty-two?
Thirty-seven.
Oh, thirty-seven years, where he's been involved and impacted. I always tell folks, whenever you think back through the number of children that you have impacted in your thirty-seven year, like, I say, that's incredible that way, so I congratulate you on a very successful career, and, and look forward to, I'm sure you're not done doing good things, and.
I won't be back so.
You won't be back so. We prefer to have you as a school board member than you won't be, so, so, but, but anyhow, I know you're happy, but, you know, kind of sad at the same time a little bit, because Deb mentioned that, you missed the kids, and that's why we get those guest teachers back that have retired, so, so, thank you. And to echo the same thing that the, the other folks up here have, have stated about the levy, we really appreciate the community's support. I'll tell you, I've mentioned nine years when I came in here that, and I wholeheartedly believe this, yard signs don't pass levies. The way we conduct our business every day is our yard sign. And, you know, we do make that pledge to continue to work with our community, and, and I would tell you, we are a leader, uh, the Newark City School's a leader in a lot of areas, such as social, emotional, dealing with trauma of our students. And the only way we can do that is connect with our community agencies and our community out there, and we're so fortunate to have those type of, of folks in our, in our community that, that step in and help us and make, make this such a great place, so, you know, we really appreciate that. Or I appreciate your, not only did you look good in that uniform, you delivered a wonderful message to, to the students and, and the families at the ROTC, and we talk about it, it's the way we conduct our business every day in this district. Our ROTC program has grown in nine years from forty-four students to three hundred. They maxed out, and the Board made that commitment a few years ago, Tom's leadership with that to say, let's get another instructor because we have too many kids who can't take that. We're about bordering again on, on that, and so, you know, if you build it, they'll come, and, and I always tell people, ninety-seven percent graduation rate of the students in ROTC, and so it's a great program, and it's so nice to have somebody on the Board, and Warren, I was very impressed of the way you delivered your speech and your message about every place you've been, and thank you for your service, because you've been all over the world, and, and it's, and we're so happy that you found Newark, to make Newark your home. I always appreciate that. Other than that, we are wrapping up our end of the year program, and we're busy every night for about three weeks, and that's great. I'm going to miss Thursday night's activities because I have a grandson graduating from preschool, and grandparents aren't going to miss that, so I'll be in Marysville Thursday night at, at that, I'm excited to, to see that, but, you know, I want to thank, Tom mentioned it, because it is true, you know, we're. it is true, you know, we're eight hundred strong in this district with our certified, classified staff, and we have so many good folks working here that are so positive for not just our children, but our families, and I'm, I'm just excited to be part of that effort there. As I always say, it's a great time to be a cat.
Well, I want to thank the ladies for coming in and sharing your thoughts. I have a daughter at Liberty, and both of my kids went through Legends, so I know one of those that you speak about, and so, and believe me, discussions have already started on that side, so just, just hear that from us, it's, it's not something that will fall between the cracks on those wonderful opportunity for, for a bunch of students here in just a few short days to walk across that stage and get their diploma, and it is a culmination of effort from people who sit behind this desk, who show up every day, teach them, and mentor them, and guide them through life, and parents, and grandparents, and aunts and uncles who pick them up, bring them to school in late arrival days, make all the difference in their lives, and we have such wonderful young people graduating. Privilege for me as the president, I get to sign the diplomas, and I wanted to put little smiley faces next to so many kids' names, because I know, I watched them grow up, and I didn't do that to any of them, by the way, because I don't know what the rules are, if that makes you illegal, or anything, so, they couldn't find smiley face on Google on diplomas, so it wasn't there. But I know they're wonderful students, and it's because of the community, and as Bud said about the levy, that is, that's why it's easier for the parents to go, and sixty percent of them to say, yeah, we believe in what you're doing, and you're making a great difference and an impact in our, the lives of our children, and my neighbor's kids, maybe, and, you know, because long before my kids were in school, I was passing levies for the kids who lived next to me, and when I'm out of school, my kids are gone, which is coming sooner than I want to, I'll be passing levies for someone else's children, because I know that's a valuable thing for the students, and so thanks to the community for that. New teachers, big shoes to fill. You know, there's a lot of wonderful people that have, that have retired over the years, and you've got to, you can come in, and you have that opportunity to make an impact in someone's life, and every year, you're gonna make a difference in some students' lives, and they may look back, and you may be the favorite that they, that they had in all of their years, and so do your best, and plug into those young people, a great opportunity for you, and congratulations for that. As we get near the end, the ones that are the saddest are the sixth graders, because they don't have Fun Day at their school anymore, and it's just totally different, they don't have those blow-up outdoor games and water fights and all those kinds of things, but it is, it's fun to see the PTA support our kids that way, and give them that, that last day of great big fun and pretty neat stuff. Great time to be a cat, and with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session. There will be one vote when we come back from executive session, and we will be voting to discuss, if I can, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of employer official, investigation of minimum charges, the purchase of property, no, however, it'll be this last one, confidential information relating to marketing plans, specific business strategy and production techniques, and that's kind of where this one falls under, but want to say we're gonna adjourn for that, and that there will be some slight business when we are done. Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
Thanks, Mike. Second, Warren?
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Ms. Nicken?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Carers?
We are in executive session.
Nine twenty, need a motion to come out of executive session?
Tell me, I'll second.
Who's first?
Tom and Warren. Call the roll.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Ms. Nicken?
Yes.
And Mr. Carr?
Yes. All right, we have one more item to vote on, it's Mike Kapachi renewing his supplemental as football coach. Motion for that, please. Tom, second?
Tom, second.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Ms. Nicken?
No.
Mr. Weber?
No.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Carers?
Right, a motion to this. Second. By acclamation, in favor?
Yes.
Aye. All right.
All right, nine twenty-two.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.